Good afternoon. Welcome to the June 1st, 2020 special meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Duffield has an excused absence and Councilmember Brenner is attending via Zoom and the rest of council are present.
Great. Thank you very much. So with special meeting, I'll take the invitation and then, Mr. Avery, would you do the pledge allegiance? All right. Thank you. Lord, we ask you watch over this community, this county, this state, and this country during a particularly tumultuous weekend. As the ultimate arbiter of justice and mercy, we ask that you place your hand upon this country and calm it. We ask that you watch over our men and women who are grieving all across this country. We ask that you watch over our first responders as they watch over our communities. Please keep them safe. And we ask you to watch over and continue to watch over our hospital personnel while we go through this major health crisis. Please watch over those people who are sick and get them better. We ask you to watch over those people who are healthy and we ask that you keep them that way. And these things we ask in my name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We'll take public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? No. All right. Well, it's another special meeting in a very special year. So I appreciate everyone's willingness to come in. When we scheduled this, we were in a slightly different frame of mind because we were able to make sure that we were moving forward on business reopenings and that has been fantastic. And then over the weekend, we saw an incredible amount of civil unrest. So I just wanted to say very briefly, our police officers were deployed on Saturday night up into Santa Ana. They came back safely. And our police officers were again deployed up into Huntington Beach yesterday. Again, they came back safely. Our fire department was deployed last night to Long Beach and they have come back safely. We will just quickly note that we are aware, at least as of tonight, that there will be another protest planned in Anaheim. We've seen chatter about it potentially being in Costa Mesa. And so we welcome, of course, any questions or concerns from our residents if they would like to ask questions about their own personal safety. I can assure you that our police department is monitoring, continuing to monitor all discussions amongst all of the Orange County public safety agencies as well as social media and other forums to make sure that they are doing the absolute best to protect our community. And I'd just like to say very quickly, thank you to Chief Lewis and all of the police officers in our community, as well as our fire, Chief Boils and all of our firefighters who have gone out of their way to not only protect this community but communities around us as well. So that is not the point of our special meeting, but I did want to at least acknowledge over the, that our thanks over the weekend. And so I would also like to say thank you very much to our staff for preparing this item over the weekend. I'll just tell you very briefly, last week on Tuesday, I was able to go represent our city at the Board of Supervisors where they were discussing the dispersment of CARES Act funding. At that meeting, they made a decision, which I'm going to ask staff to quickly go over and discuss, but they made the decision to disburse money through the different supervisory districts. Our particular supervisor has decided to disburse the money that was allocated to her district through to the cities, which is what we're talking about, in order to make sure that that money is dispersed as quickly as possible, but also with safeguards of accountability and transparency. We need to, we need to act quickly in order to create a program, including the administration. So that's why we've called the special meeting. Again, I appreciate everyone's flexibility to be here so we can continue to help our businesses. So with that, here's what we need to do today. The first is, I would very much like to do, have a quick overview of the program, the CARES funding money, the counties discussion, and basically what the money, what the restrictions are, what the overview is. And then we need to be able to provide direction to our staff on two overarching topics. The first is the administration of the program, and the second is program specifics, the first being important because using federal money coming through the county, there are substantial legal restrictions and legal requirements being placed on any program like this. We need to be very, very good on accountability on this side of things. And then the second is the program specifics. We've received a detailed staff report on this. We're going to go through the discussions because we need to be able to provide direction on, on priorities and program specifics and et cetera. So we're going to be doing that, but I wanted to at least give a quick overview of how we'll run today's meeting. And with that, I'll hand it over to staff to give an overview. Thank you.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Today's staff is seeking, as the mayor indicated, your input on some program parameters that we've drafted for a small business relief grant program. The goal here is to design a program that best meets the needs of our small businesses, but also carefully meeting the county and federal requirements that come along with this money that we've been given. Where did the money come from? The $2.1 million is part of the coronavirus relief fund, and that is federal money set aside under the CARES Act. The county of Orange received about $500 million. And of that allocation that the county received, they in turn set aside $75 million for local economic development programs. Further, the county decided to divide that $75 million into the five supervisory districts, and our supervisor, Michelle Steele, opted to give her cities, take her $15 million and divide it among the cities in her district to do their own grant programs. So record-keeping documentation will be very important in this process because it is federal money. And to that end, staff is strongly recommending that we retain an experienced program administrator to assist us. And we found that administrator, we believe, in the Orange County Small Business Development Council. These are small business owners that come together. It's a nonprofit, and they offer assistance year-round, not just now, year-round, to small businesses throughout Orange County. They are well-experienced in loan and grant programs. They are actually going to be the administrators of the county program. Some of the supervisors actually are running their program through the county and not through their individual cities. They're also helping some of our neighboring cities. And we just felt that they have the staff expertise and the structure already in place. They have the applications. They have the process. They know what to do. As soon as we hand them a program that you feel, that you're comfortable with, they can get it started. Staff would appreciate your input on the whole program, but in particular, there are some decision points that we feel that your feedback was really warranted on. That is the business size. We proposed businesses of 20 employees or less, and that, I'll get into that in the next slide a bit more. The size of the grant amounts, and the funding priority, how you would like us to allocate this fund, these funds. Business size. The county contract with the city defines a small business as anything under employee count of 100 or less. There's no question, I think we all agree, that most, if not all of our small businesses do need assistance. However, the smaller of our small businesses in particular really need help right now to get reopened and to try to recover. So staff looked at what some other cities were doing. Most are doing 10. Some are doing 20 because they want to make sure they could capture some of their restaurants in that. And some of our small to mid-sized restaurants have more than 10 employees if you count their part-timers. So we were recommending generally 20 full-time employees, and that can be a combination of part-time and full-time, roughly two-to-one ratio, you know, 40 part-timers, 20 full-timers. And we can work out the details on that, but we just really wanted to get your input on a number where you're comfortable in defining the small business. The next decision point is the grant structure itself. We were looking at grants of up to $10,000 and allocating those in a tiered structure according to the number of employees a business has. Five or less would be eligible up to $5,000, six to 10, up to $7,500, and 11 to 20, a grant of up to $10,000. Another area that we would appreciate your comments on is funding priority. Again, all of our small businesses need assistance. Staff is suggesting that some of our businesses in our commercial and industrial quarters in particular need some help right now. Our retail establishments, restaurants, and the personal services such as hair salons, nail salons, that also were forced to close, and some of which are not even allowed to reopen yet. And those are the three main areas that we call out to you. I'm sure council may have other questions.
All right. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. This whole process is new to cities, so I was hoping to just take a quick, high-level view of how this, how we got here. And then I can defer back to my council and I'll have specific questions about the grant program. But first, just so we know, the $500 million to send to Orange County is being done across the nation to be sent to counties throughout the U.S., correct?
Correct.
And it is being funneled essentially with White House overview through the Treasury Department?
Correct.
And this is different from going directly to the cities, which is an alternative that was explored, but it looks like the administration and legislators decided to have it go through the counties, correct?
Correct.
And the $75 million that's to be spent on businesses, that is a portion of those funds specifically earmarked by the supervisors. Did they choose that amount?
Yes, the 75 the county set aside of their 500 million.
And when the county set that aside, the very supervisors decided how they wanted their pro-rata portion, based on population of the five supervisors, to be spent within their district, correct?
Yes.
And so Supervisor Steele and Wagner, who've been great leaders in the pandemic and what's going on right now, they both decided in their district to have that money be a pass-through essentially from the county to the city. And we're bringing an administrator to help us do it in a way that's professional and there's oversight. And obviously, we're setting the parameters as we speak. But that's what brings Newport Beach to the $21 million for dispersment that we're talking about today.
The 2.1, yes.
Sorry, 2.1, yes. Thank you. Excuse me.
21 would be nice.
Yeah, yeah. I know that there's been some debate about how that money should be spent at every level, at the county, at the state, at the city. And some people actually were talking about trying to hold on to that money. And as I understand it, you may not have knowledge, as my understanding is, is that the White House did not want this money to be held onto for a rainy day. It is essentially for the purpose of stimulating. So we are not able to take this 2.1 million and have it offset some expense this year. We're not able to use it for a rainy day. We're not able to use it for unfunded pension liabilities. We have a directive, as do all these cities, to give it straight to the bit of small businesses, correct?
That is correct. It's COVID-19 relief monies. And further, the county agreement with the city says you will do a small business grant program.
Excellent. So I'm outlining this just so that takes away any controversy that some might have with the program. It's, it's the intent of the program, how it works from the White House all the way down to the county and now the city, and how our hands essentially are, are bound to follow the rules of the agreements and the intent of the funds. So I imagine that this is, this has been a very big learning curve for you and for staff. Thank you for stepping up to this. I'm impressed more and more with the caliber and performance of our staff during this time. I have some questions specifically about these, what you've outlined. Could you go back, I think, two slides? Yes, this one in particular. But I'm going to yield my time to my colleagues and I can come back because maybe someone else is going to address it. Thank you.
So before we get into the discussion on the specifics, unless, since I can't see here, I just, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herdman, go ahead. Sorry. I'm, I'm a little off-center, so I'm not, I didn't see that you were asking to speak. Go ahead.
You asked questions, right? That's what we're doing right now? Okay. So on, on this particular page right here, as a matter of fact, I'm wondering if we could have a provision within each category for a business to apply for less than the 5,000, the 7,500, or the 10,000. Maybe a company with 11 to 20 employees might only need 8,000, for example. Just something to think about, take into consideration. And then over on, under next steps, add a number seven. I would suggest we add a number seven that says the grant recipient would agree to an inspection to verify the proper expenditure of funds received. Just an accountability piece there. That's, in reading through all this, that's really the only couple of things that I saw that I'd like to recommend be added. And then I was curious about the formula used. If you know, Will, the formula used for dividing the money up, did?
It was population.
Just population?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, divided into the total amount of funds available. All right.
Exactly right.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
You bet. So I, just as a side note, that, it's a good question. And I actually talked to Supervisor Steele because that's what she was planning on doing. I, I will say very quickly, I don't agree at all with using population on a county-wide basis. But when it comes to Supervisor Steele's district, it actually does, it's not exactly perfect, but there's not a great metric that's perfect. But on this one, it makes more sense. All of her cities, the cities in her district are full-service cities, so it's, it's just different. But that was an easy metric for them to use, and that's why she, that's why they used it. So I'll tell you what, before we jump, I agree with, I agree with those statements that Councilman Herdman just made, by the way. So when we come back to the discussion about the specifications, we probably should put in the words "up to" in front of the, the monetary figures. And then I, I do agree with the inspection. That's a good idea. But before we jump in, oh, I'm, so Ms. Brenner, I know you're going to want to speak in just a second. I would, I, I just want to point out, what would be really helpful is, for now, if you have any questions about the program setup, like how we got the money, let's ask questions now. I'd like to then do the discuss, okay, perfect. And then just for everyone else, we're going to do a discussion about the administration of the funds, and then we'll get into the program specifics. There'll probably be more discussion on the third, but I just want to make sure I'm structuring this. Okay, Ms. Brenner.
Yes, my question, Will, I think it's for you because you were there, but I am interested in, the county got $500 million, and they chose to distribute $75 million to the cities. Do you know what they're doing with the other $425 million?
I'm sorry. I'm only laughing because that's been sort of controversial. So they, so they set aside approximately 80% of that money to go toward county-specific response to COVID. The, all of the money that, all of the ways that that money is being spent has actually been, I couldn't tell you, but I do know that Voice of OC, for example, has done a decent article on that. I just can't recall off the top of my head all of the ways that they're spending that 400 million or so. They also set aside, they, so they set aside around $26 million to also reimburse cities for their direct COVID-related expenses. Newport Beach does have them, and we have been seeking reimbursement for, we have, correct, Ms. Leung, as we go along?
Yes, we're certainly tracking all our expenses and looking to get FEMA reimbursement first and foremost, but this will provide additional funds for us to.
Got it. Okay. So, for example, police overtime, dealing with beach traffic, and a whole bunch of other things. I mean, you're, if you go into our city hall right now, you'll see plexiglass and other things. So there's a lot, but we've been keeping track of that and then seeking reimbursement. So the county has set aside $26 million for, for city, for city reimbursement for COVID-related expenses. The federal guidelines are abundantly clear. That does not apply to revenue displacement, for example, so we wouldn't be able to backfill. So anyway, that's, I, I would like to give you a more detailed answer, but I don't think that I have all the detailed answer to give you at the moment.
Do you think we will, will there be someplace for us to be able to track what they do with the other 400 million?
There better be.
Okay.
I mean, they have to, they have to submit their own accountability reports to the U.S. Treasury, just like we would have to do on this program.
Perhaps Grace could keep us informed about that?
Great, yeah.
I, I'm just very interested in whether the county has suffered that much more from all of these related expenses than the cities have, because it seems like the cities have been bearing the brunt of this. So I know they have the Orange County Health Department and the Orange County sheriffs, but I'd be very interested in following that.
Okay.
Yes, I, yeah, I will definitely get that information together and could provide updates. And I will note, as Councilmember Brenner mentioned, with the Public Health Department, there is quite a bit of expenses because they're, they are overseeing all the testing, and then we'll go into the contact tracing. And then also, they're, they have the primary responsibility over the homeless and, and some of the regulations and requirements that have come out of that as well in terms of putting them into shelter spaces that have the social distancing. So there are quite a bit of expenses on the county side as well.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have the computer, so.
Okay. Yep. Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
A couple of things.
So because we're on video, not mic.
Here, excuse me. Yes, thank you very much. Tara, we've all received a communication from the Newport Chamber and some constructive terms and condition inclusions that really don't change the intent at all, in my opinion, of what we're trying to do, but just refining it a little bit further. How do you intend to incorporate, if anything? Or do you need council action or direction?
If there's something in particular in Steve's letter that council would like us to particularly include, we will.
For example, just some technical clarifications. If we say March 1st, 20.
Oh, so that'll be, that'll be the third discussion.
Oh, okay. So I'll strike that for now. New subject related to money. In addition to the $2.1 million that we're getting from the county, we have identified, staff has identified about $600,000, $630,000 of funds that we have access to in our own reserves, community development block grant funds, and some other COVID, I think one other COVID. How, I know they're for different purposes, obviously. How does staff suggest we determine how to allocate those expenses?
Yes, I think it's actually a total about $450,000 to $480,000 in total. We have about 200-some outstanding that can be used towards an economic development program of existing CDBG allocation, so that's federal funds, as well as another 200-some that's specifically CARE Act-related that's going through CDBG. We are actively looking right now. We're waiting for the guidance that comes from the federal side of how we can spend those monies. CDBG has a lot more restrictions to them, particularly on the income side and income restrictions to it. So I think it's, would be really important to keep that separate from this, which does not have that income restriction to it, and also to get this, the funds moving very quickly. But we, in the meantime, want to look at an economic development program, which might be additional grants or loans or that type of program for that 400-some-odd thousand dollars that we have. And we're just awaiting for the final guidance on that to be able to.
We got something in late last week, but maybe I'm wrong. Well, so do you see this supplementing whatever we determined, so this could be?
I agree, yes.
And put into the same?
Right, to, to help businesses as well. That, that's the intent. So that, it would be additional to this amount. So.
That's excellent. Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Avery.
I know that Business Development Council will administer this, but do we have any sense of what our cost would be, just assume it's staff time?
Do you want me to take that one?
I don't yet know what our in-house cost would be, because you're right, there is a staff element to, staff time element to it. Our understanding is the OC SBDC has an agreement with the county to handle its entire program from beginning to end at a cost of about 5% of the loan amount. We think we can reach an agreement for less than that because we will handle our own financial matters, the cutting of the checks, the processing. So we think our, our percentage will be less.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so that takes us into the second discussion point anyway, which is the administration side. Would you mind touching just a little bit on the thought process in terms of, you know, the difficulty of administering this at staff level versus needing to go outside?
Absolutely. Some cities are doing it staff level. They tend to have an economic development staff that's dedicated full-time to economic development. We could still do it here, but because of, these are federal dollars, under a county agreement, there are some really strict reporting requirements that we want to make sure we hit every, you know, aspect of those requirements. I'm sorry, I thought I was being cute. And in addition, we wanted someone that really can create a fair and balanced program. And OC, excuse me, SBDC has that experience. They've been doing loans for, I think, almost 30 years in Orange County, but in particular, they've been very involved in CARES Act loans and grants for a number of cities, and they're running the county's program. So we thought it would be wise to go with an experienced administrator, and our program would also be in line with the others. Again, in case there is any federal eyes on us and wondering how Orange County is using these funds, all of us would have somewhat similar programs. Yeah, and I would add to that. In talking with other cities in Orange County, the vast majority, if they are not doing it in-house, and there's very few who actually are doing it in-house from what we can see, are going with the SBDC. They have, they have a program set up. They have some of the details of it. They have a lottery system that they've developed and can launch very quickly. So they could move this into this program in a very quick manner. That will be consistent across the county of how the program funds are being administered, which, as Tara had mentioned, is really going to be critical when there's going to be a lot of eyes on how these funds have been spent. So, and then as a nonprofit organization, they have very little overhead. And the other good thing about them is, in talking with the district director, and he had said, all the employees there, they are all small business owners. So I, I think that's good to have that experience and background, yet they're not from Newport Beach, which I also think is important as we allocate funds to our businesses, that there's a good sense of fairness, no conflict of interest, or those kinds of matters coming before. So that's why we are choosing this as our proposal.
And this, and this outside consultant, or outside agency, they would also be the ones choosing who received the money and how much they would be receiving based on the parameters we're creating now?
That, that's correct.
Okay, so we wouldn't have folks on city staff making those decisions?
That's correct.
And we definitely wouldn't have city council members making those decisions?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, or former. So my, and I, and I emphasize that because that's one of the reasons I want to make sure we're doing a good job setting the parameters today because as council members, I think it's very important we not be ever in a position of even closely being accused of trying to influence money being directed out of this program. So it's important we're making the calls today. So Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry, Mr. Avery, were you clicking in? Okay, Ms. Dixon.
Yeah, well, that reminded me of another question I had. So, and I totally agree with the process that the council, no council member or current or former will be involved in this decision process. Similar to how we administer the CDBG, we have a consultant who makes those recommendations, so it's totally hands-off. However, similar to CDBG funds, there is always a report as to how the funds are allocated. So we will, as a council, be reviewing that recommendation.
I would expect, well, not the recommendation, but afterward.
Finality.
After they're, after it's been dispersed, yeah.
After it's been dispersed.
I would expect so.
Okay. I just didn't know what the terms and conditions in that part of it was. So we would, just to be clear, that the council nor the city staff would have any role in the decision-making process?
Correct.
All right, but we'll need a report on what transpired. Yeah.
Yeah, because we would have to report back to the county anyway, so I would expect it. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Ms. Brenner, you still have your hand up. Would you like to speak on this issue?
No, it was raised from before, but I, I can ask when I should ask the question about why nonprofits were not included?
Yep, well, very shortly. So does everyone, generally speaking, agree, I'm going to take a straw poll. Everybody generally agree that we need to go with a outdoor, I'm sorry, an outside administrator, hopefully less than 5%, but at a maximum of five, if you would please show your hands for that?
That was unanimous, 6-0.
Okay. All right, so let's go into the one that'll, we'll have more discussion on. So the, we're going to talk about proposed program parameters. What our staff has laid out is a few highlights, and I want to make sure we go through basically the top four. So the top four, the first one is the eligibility. The, I had a question on the eligibility, so I'm looking at the 1-3 on our page now. One of the four, so the four, the four needs to show, one of them is, the business was deemed non-essential and forced to shut down. Sales from the business are down by 25% compared to the previous three months. The business has had to lay off at least one of its employees, or one or more of the employees in the business have contracted COVID while at work. One of the questions that I had, I, I want to talk about two and four of those bullet points. The, the one that I have, I'm struggling with is number four, which is the employee, one of the employees contracted COVID. I've kind of understood that that would be really difficult. And then I saw, so we're going to talk a little bit about the Chambers letter that came in also, but he highlighted the same concern I had, which is, I mean, I'm not sure how they could even do that, given the health issue, you know, the, given health privacy issues and whatnot. Is, did this come, did this fourth bullet point come from a federal document, or did we make that one?
It came from some guidance that SBDC put out to some of
It came from some guidance that SBDC put out to some of its cities, and they were basically trying to help us prove that these businesses have been impacted by COVID-19, but when I talked to the administrator, he said, any of those can be adjusted, just as long as you're showing there's an impact.
Okay, I would, I would suggest we get rid of the fourth bullet point, just because I don't, I just have no idea. I, one thing that'll happen also is you probably end up in a situation where some of the businesses that you probably, that, you know, so for example, I know we're going to talk about priorities, but if a business got shut down, they're not going to have an employee that tested positive, but if they got shut down and they had an employee who they were still paying or on furlough and they got it, it doesn't make sense to have to worry about that, that's a different impact. But the other thing that I was seeing on the second bullet point is, to the Chamber's letter's point, I, I think that's a good point, which is, you can basically, I think you could look at two different things. One, you could look at the comparable three months from 2019 compared to this one, or the previous three months as well, because some of these are going to be seasonal. And so if you had a restaurant, for example, that does better during, you know, when we, when we're starting to see tourists come back, but they're, they're pretty low during the non-seasonal months, they might not actually be able to show some of that. I guess a restaurant's a bad example because they kind of got shut down. Well, anyway, if you could, we could do two metrics. One is comparable three months from 2019 or the three months before, I think that would be helpful. So real quick on the eligibility requirements, any comments on those, any of those four?
I agree with the fourth one, that you, I think HIPAA laws would, would prevent us from asking that question.
I think so too, I think we, I think it's a little murky. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Muldoon.
I don't think this is a make or break, but the reason why I like number four is it just gives, it's broad, it allows a company to say, yeah, if someone tested positive, I had to close the whole business for 14-plus days. These obviously, it's just one of the following ways, so someone could be dishonest, and because HIPAA, we can't confirm that actually did close it down, but I personally would like to keep as much flexibility as possible.
Okay, we'll come back around on that one then.
Good point.
Yeah. Then we come in on the terms and conditions, it's okay. Oh yeah, of course, Ms. Dixon.
I'm at number four, I think. Governor Newsom has already established, under the Emergency Act order, that workers' compensation, companies will be required to pay workers' compensation regardless of whether the employee caught it on, on the job or somewhere else, and so that's, workers' compensation is an automatic benefit to the worker. So I don't know if that comes into play here, how it affects the overall company, but just to know, I guess it's just a reminder that employees will be covered under state law, under workers' comp.
Yeah, I saw that. It was interesting, because it's not quite, we're not, we're not suggesting we give the money toward workers' compensation, I don't think they can, so that was, I saw that point, I wasn't, wasn't quite sure what, because when we're talking about just eligibility, then you can start getting into the issues of...
Although employers have to pay workers' comp.
They do.
Yeah.
They do, a lot more now.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a fair point for what, for, I think Kevin's point is well-taken. I, I, if, if someone can figure out how to qualify under that, that's fine. The second one is, though I think we should just expand it just a little bit to the previous, so the terms and conditions and then the priorities, oh, I'm sorry, the grant amounts. I'd like to take those out of order if we could, so let's talk, can you go to the grant amounts slide? So the, I do think, Mr. Erdman's point is well-taken to say up to instead of a flat grant amount. Anyone have any comments on this? And then, sorry, if you're controlling the screen, could I see Ms. Brenner? Okay, great, thanks. All right. So when we're looking at this, then, does anyone have any comments on this? Mr. Muldoon?
Just for general discussion, for us to brainstorm, what do you do about restaurants that clearly have more than 20, or business has 21 or 25, or something really close? Is there any flexibility, maybe we could just put in the hands of the administrator to use their best judgment? I just don't want to be overly rigid on this. Or is there, is there way in other cities are dealing with this, or are they going black, black and white 20 is the cap?
Generally, what we've seen is a number, like 20 or 25, I think at the most, a lot of them were 10 employees. In talking with the administrator, they said, there is flexibility on defining the number of employees, and for, so we did the two to one for the part-time, just to do an easy, something that's an easy calculation for businesses and not to be onerous with that, but if, if we want it to be a little bit, you know, because you can have a lot of part-time employees, I suppose, working 10, 15 hours a week, so if you wanted to, maybe we can look at adjusting that ratio a little bit too, because I think particularly in restaurants, it is a lot of part-time employees there, so we can look at adjusting that two-to-one ratio. We were just trying to find whatever's the simplest way, the easiest way to understand for speed, but, but we can work on that with the administrator.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with flexibility administrators are showing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should we then increase the number from 11 to 20 to like 11 to 30 then, with the flexibility that you just described, so that, it's a fair...
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, of course, Ms. Dixon.
I think that we still have a pro, a requirement that the recipient shall not have received any other federal funds, is that, that would be part of our requirement?
We are asking them to let us know if they have. It'll go into the decision that the administrator makes, but it may not preclude them, because that grant that they got, or, excuse me, the loan they got, or the paycheck protection program may have only covered some of their costs, so this could augment that.
Because I think the idea of keeping these numbers of the small, is for small business, and the larger, potentially 30 or more, maybe are already receiving funds under another program, perhaps?
They're generally more sophisticated and have access to capital.
But then it brings up a point, it's, I'm listening to, I'm sure we'll get this question, is it full-time equivalent employees? Because you've got a lot of businesses who have part-time employees, so should we come, should we equate this to full-time equivalents?
We went down that path this weekend and decided that might be confusing for some businesses, but if that's...
But then it's confusing in a way that they're not addressed part-time employees, so they have 10 full-time employees, but they have 30 part-time employees.
Or if you said 20, I'd say...
So what, how do we, I guess, I'm agnostic in the sense of however, we should just account for it some way.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation, come up with a formula if they have full-time and part-time employees. I'm sure most of them have part-time employees.
Yeah, and the intent was to do 20 or, 20 full-time or a combination of full or part-time that matches up to that, so we'll work with the administrator on that.
Because a small business owner is going to say, well, I have a person who works five hours or 10 hours, so it has to be full-time equivalent.
Well, so we didn't want to get into a complete numbers calculation, so that they'd have to, you know, once you hit 21 hours, what is that, at 32 hours? So we wanted to kind of make it an easy type of calculation, which I think we can get through that with the administrator, who has a lot of experience through these. I think a key for us is, do you like the 20, whether it's full or part-time or combination, or do you want to go up a little bit, maybe to 30, as was suggested?
I think given the, given the fact that we're talking about personal service and restaurants and whatnot, and the way that those, those, they work, because you have, you know, you run a restaurant, you've got chefs and busboys, you've got hostesses, you've got, and hosts, you've got servers, they, they tend to have a lot more people working in a restaurant than they do working at, you know, a barber shop, for example. So it makes a lot more, and they could occupy pretty similar space, and you're still going to have a lot more people working at a restaurant, so I would say just bump it up to 30 and, and just, you know, and give the flexibility, because we're still, that's still a small business, I mean, 30 employees is still, I mean, it's getting bigger, but it's still, it's still bigger. You look over at Jack's, for example, just a stone's throw from where we are, or something like that, I mean, that's a small business, but they still would have 30 employees, I'm sure, so. Yeah, well, I mean, no, it's still affiliates, no, 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 they have to account for their affiliates, so that's, that's a different, it's, it's a good point, so I mean, you, you take something else, but there's plenty of little shops that you could kind of start coming up with, but, but yes, it's, in a situation where it's a chain, you still have to account for affiliates, so I, even though we don't have a target, I wouldn't expect target to apply, for example. Yeah. Okay, and then, so we've got that, and then the two that are going to require a little bit of discussion, a little bit more discussion, are the terms and conditions and the priorities. Let's just, let's talk terms and conditions, so we can go down the list just a little bit. I know, so the first one is for-profit, and I know Ms. Brenner was going to want to talk to this, so I'm going to, I'll, I'll kick it over to you first, Ms. Brenner.
Well, my question was, obviously, this is geared towards small businesses and the small business organization that we're looking at administering it, but are there other similar programs that are geared to this sort of recovery for nonprofits? They've been hit incredibly hard in this time, so, and do others, are all cities limiting this to small businesses, or are some of them making it open to nonprofits as well?
Most, if not all, of the cities that we, whose programs that we looked at, and in our, in our conversation with SBDC, we could do nonprofits as well. Most of the other cities have not, we're really looking for, in our staff's estimation, those businesses in commercial and industrial districts that have been forced to close that couldn't do their work from home, people that simply couldn't operate during this time, and trying to get that money to those that need it most to reopen and recover, in our estimation.
So, I mean, the nonprofits have just the other example, where they have been working full steam ahead and fully staffed and bringing on extra, so is there a similar program, or is there something that is helping those organizations?
I am not aware of such a program, there may be, I know many of them have been reaching, I've been getting emails from different groups asking, at this time, they particularly need fundraising, and they've been reaching out to folks to ask for donors. I don't know of a formal program, though.
All right, councilor.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what, is that possible?
For, for the CDBG funds, it is an economic development program, so my understanding that there are, it's income restricted, so I think it's something that we can look into, and I think we're developing the program right now, so I'd rather, instead of saying yes or no, we'll look, we'll look into it.
That's fine.
All right. So we'll come back around, but I want to make sure we just kind of hit high points, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through, and if you have any particular points you want to raise, just let me know. So the business must be legal and located in a commercial industrial space? Okay. The officers of the business must reside in Orange County, California?
I, not one.
Yep.
Maybe a majority of officers, it would be pretty understandable if someone had a, an officer out of state, especially if they have a decent-sized board.
That was language in our agreement with the county, but I think it was vague. The other one, excuse me, staff did not put on here, is that the principal office of the business must be located in this jurisdiction. We forgot to, we didn't notice until, actually, this morning when we reread the county agreement.
I think that...
That trims things down a bit, too.
Yes, so I'm sorry, I should probably, that, the, the county agreement requires that.
All, that all?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, when I read it, Aaron, yeah, when I read it, that was a county thing. I know, I, we, I wouldn't have written that in, but I don't know, the county did, yeah, because for the exact reason you, you just mentioned. The business must have an active Newport Beach license for a minimum of six months. I know the chamber was looking for maybe three, I think six is justified, I'd like to see a little bit of a track record in our community.
From the time of applying for the grant back?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, that's how you understood it? Okay. The business must have 20 or less full-time or an equivalent combination, so we'll just jump that to 30 on that high end. Business must be in good standing, which means it's current on its business license fees or business improvement district assessment. I saw the Chamber's comment that that should be an "and" instead of an "or," I agree, by the way, that it should probably, it should be an "and," even if I don't fully agree, and everyone knows this on the business improvement side, I, it is still, once we approve a program like that, people are still obligated to pay it, and so I do think that that's, I do want to see compliance on that front, especially if they're going to be seeking money.
Just a quick straw poll now, I disagree.
Okay.
I support the bid, but it is voluntary, and I'd just like to be as broad as possible, so if someone is not in conformity with all the dues or the membership requirements of the bid, but they're in the physical jurisdiction, I still think they should be eligible.
Yeah, so the problem, this is, this is why I don't like the bid, it's not voluntary, that's the, this is the...
I meant in the reality sense, not in the technical sense, yes.
Okay.
And or, did you say?
So, so right now, it's "or," so you could either be up on your business license, or you could be up on your business improvement.
I'd say "or," why do you want to "and"?
Well, because...
Both of them, you want both?
I would say it's an "and," because if you're a business in our city, and we are required, and we have a requirement that you pay both your business license tax and your business improvement district fees.
Oh, okay.
Right, so it doesn't make any sense that's...
If it applies, maybe they don't belong to the bid.
Correct.
Okay, so if applicable.
If applicable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, "and" is fine.
So we'll take a straw poll on that, but any other comments on that one first? All right, I'll, I'll come back around, because, I'm sorry, Mr. Avery, did you have something? Sorry, since we're on a...
A marine activities permit as well.
Well, we would have to put the marine activities permit language into this, and we could. Would you like to see that included?
I would.
Okay, so, hang on one second, because I need to come back and do straw poll, give me just a moment. The next one is the PPP, or basically federal fund, the question is, have you received federal funding? So the, the issue, and I will say real quickly, this is a priority issue, so we're going to come back to this when we come back to priority, but that, so anyway, we'll come back on this one. The business must follow the state's reopening guidance for their industry. Yeah. The business must submit, I'm sorry. Oh, the business must submit the application and all required supporting documentation, and then... Okay. All right, let me come back then to... There are three things I want to take a straw poll on, and... All right, one of them is whether it needs to be for-profit or can we include nonprofits? I'm going to initially take a straw poll on including only for-profits, so if you're in favor of only for-profits, raise your hand.
And the reason why is because the county has so much money, you're marking four nonprofits already, it's probably disproportionate.
Right.
As I see it.
So if I, and then if you would like to see nonprofits...
One moment, Councilmember Brenner, I couldn't see, was your hand up or not?
And I'm...
No.
Right, I'm going to take the straw poll of including nonprofits and for-profits.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, Ms. Brenner, would you like to raise your hand for that one?
Well, could I just say that included in the evaluation of the organization applying for this would be included whether they were getting other funding from the state, or, so I don't think it would be a matter if they were getting excess funding from the county and from this organization.
Understood, so, but I do want to make sure that I take a straw poll on including nonprofit and for-profit.
Okay.
So if you'd like to do that, please raise your hand. That's okay, just put your hand up, I can see you.
Which side are we on?
No, I can, so, so what we're saying, so we've taken a straw poll on including only for-profit, if you would like to see for-profit and nonprofit, raise your hand. Okay, so she's raised her hand.
I'm the only one, okay.
And then, coming back down to the question on, the business must be in good standing with the city, meaning it must be current on its business license fees or business improvement district assessment. The first straw poll I'm going to take is whether we should also include marine activities permit, and I would note that the question for both the bid and the map would be qualified by the phrase "if applicable." Right, okay.
That's a clarifying question on that?
Absolutely.
Mr. Harp, could you just explain who should be having one and why?
Well, depending on the type of business you have out in the harbor, sometimes you need a marine activities permit, so kind of your charter boats, things of that nature are what need the permit, I mean...
One would be not in compliance with local ordinances, if they did not have one, but they fell in that category, correct?
That'd be correct.
It's basically like a business license requirement.
Yeah, it's very similar.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, so I am going to... All right, so I am going to take a second straw poll on the phrase "and" versus "or," but for now, it's only marine activities permit. If you're in favor of that, please raise your hand.
That was unanimous.
Okay. And then, the question of using the phrase "and" instead of "or," also, again, it would be qualified by the phrase "if applicable." So, at this point, I'll take the, the straw poll of inserting the word "and" instead of "or."
That was...
She's, she raised her hand. And then, if you'd like to see the phrase remain as "or," please raise your hand.
Just Councilmember Muldoon.
Okay. And then, I'm going to, on everything that I did not just discuss, if you would agree with the remaining terms that are in the bullet point, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner, go ahead.
I have a question. On the second to the last bullet point, where it says the business must follow the state's reopening guidance for their industry, I can see that being problematic. If we have restaurants that are not following the distancing requirements or anything like that, how do we, seems like that could be really a problem. Certainly, if we have citizens complaining to us about that, and we're not enforcing it, it puts us into an awkward position.
Okay. So, let's...
Can I respond? Quickly?
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll go on to Mr. Muldoon.
That's why I'm suggesting number seven under next steps. The, the grant recipient will agree to an inspection. If there's any complaints from the community, we can inspect. I don't know what the consequence would be, but at least we're, I'm suggesting we allow for an inspection.
And then, I'll go to Mr. Muldoon, and then Ms. Dixon, and then I'll probably ask Ms. Liang to respond, and Mr. Harp, too.
I, I'm under the impression, in my reading and understanding of enforcement of rules since being on this council for five years, it would take an enormous amount of resources to inspect if someone was 25% or 30% occupancy at a restaurant. I interpret this really as a limitation of liability to make sure no one is essentially being, having flagrant disregard for the laws of the state. So, that is my reason for supporting the language as written. I, I understand what could, could be a quagmire that you're pointing out, Ms. Brenner, but I think for the sake of enforcement and practical restrictions on resources, we won't be looking to micromanage this. We'll just be looking to make sure no one is completely disregarding the law.
All right, Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I'd like, Mr. Juergens, could you come up, since you are the emperor of permits? How is your organization enforcing the new permits that are issued, just to address Ms. Brenner's question, if they are not adhering to the code?
Certainly. So, so just a reminder, the council approved a temporary use permit program, and we've issued a number of them these past weeks. So, part of that permit program is for restaurants or retail to expand into the parking lot. After we issued the permit, we have a code enforcement officer that goes out to the business establishment and ensures that the expansion matches what the staff has approved. So, we actually have a site plan seating layout, so we actually do that physical inspection. So, with that program, we've completed our inspection part of the process. If we get a complaint, and we've gotten a couple complaints over the weekend where restaurants have, are not enforcing their social distancing, we are, we jump to a reactive program, and we actually are going to pick up the phone and call the business establishment. We did that today to a couple restaurants and said, you know, here's some photos, we've got some complaints, you know, you're not, you need to ensure social distancing of your patrons, of your visitors that are coming into that expanded area. So, it's a reactive program that we're, we're following through on.
So, to that point, if any of those businesses are receiving the recipient of these funds, then you actually, you have some action, you could pull the permit, essentially, or...
We have, we have revocation authority to pull the permit or even amend the permit if necessary. So, we have, we have a lot of teeth.
So, there is on the other side of this, in terms of code enforcement?
Yes.
An enforcement mechanism. Okay, thanks.
And then, to the, to the point that Mr. Muldoon raised, I'll kick it over to Ms. Liang and maybe Mr. Harp on the question of, you know, if, if we, if someone, I would assume that the application would include basically a box that they would check saying, yes, we've followed the guidance, and then if we had a complaint about a particular business, what's the ramification for it? And, you know, do we have, would we actually be sending out staff resources on, on something like this to Mr. Muldoon's point? It's a pretty good, it's pretty tough to do that sort of thing.
No, yeah, I, I, we would certainly, we certainly follow up on it. I, I think our critical areas that we would be concerned about is, is if the funds aren't being spent for what they were, you know, saying that they were going to spend it on, because that's from a later-on-audit perspective for us. The other thing that we are looking at, and in talking with the administrator, that could be a good practice, is that we give half of the funds upfront, review the documentation, and then give the, the second half after that. So, that gives a little bit of incentive to ensure that they're documenting and spending the funds appropriately. I know this is a little bit broader to Councilmember Brenner's question of following all the guidance from the state. And I think we have to approach it like we're approaching it with the permits we're doing now, you know, and, and I think that the, the challenge is, the guidance is continually changing and evolving. We have, you know, as we're moving into the stage three, and then, you know, hopefully into the stage four after that, there'll be continual adjustment of what that means and how we have to follow through on that. So, I, I do think we have to take it from a, at this point, with how we're resourced, from a reactive basis, but that we do have the ability to inspect, we do have the ability to look at what the permits they have and to do, pull them if we need to on that, or, and if the funds, if we haven't distributed all of the funds yet to them, if it's half, and then we're finding they're not following, say they've opened up when they weren't supposed to open up at all, then we can take a look at holding off on that second half of that funding. So, I, I think that's how we would approach it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Mr. Avery?
Yeah, I agree. Just my, driving up and down the peninsula the last few days, many businesses are not following the guidelines, and I think it's really tough, and, you know, in sort of the environment we have down there, people, you know, are excited to be out and all the rest of it. I, I just think we should just, rather than be on the front end trying to put another roadblock based on what people say they saw, just let our code enforcement take care of it as they already are and respond to complaints, and, because otherwise, it's, it's really tough to do it on the front end. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess it's a self-representation on the front end. Okay, all right, understood. Okay, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to take a, based on the, the rest of the language, basically the bullet points we didn't specifically just discuss, I'm just going to take one remaining straw poll that you're, you agree with. Sorry, go ahead, Tara.
Staff, note the addition of the county requirement that the principal office is located within the city.
Yep, okay. So, with the addition of that county requirement, for all of the bullet points we didn't specifically just vote on, I'd like to do a straw poll approving the recommended remaining bullet points. So, if you're in favor of that, please raise your hand. Sorry, Joy, would you mind make it...
I can't, myself, so I don't know if I'm showing up or not.
Here, I'll tell you what, just put it right in front of your face, and I guarantee we'll be able to see it. Perfect, okay. All right, thank you. So, let's go, so now we need to talk about funding priority. I'm just going to read the staff recommendation on the funding priority, just so we can make sure that we have right in front of us. The program would be open to any small business that meets the eligibility criteria, terms and conditions, and staff anticipates that the number of qualifying applicants will exceed the number of grants available. In an effort to provide assistance to businesses in the city's commercial and industrial areas that have been severely impacted by COVID-19, staff recommends that retail, restaurant, and personal service establishments, specifically hair salons and barber shops, nail salons, small gyms, and health clubs that provide services on-site be given precedence. Qualified applications from these types of businesses would be given priority during the grant application process. Just to clarify what you mean by clarifica, priority, my understanding is the following. If, basically, if, let's assume for a moment that we had, I'm just going to round numbers, $2 million, and we gave $10,000 worth of grants, we would have 200, 200 businesses to give this out to. It would be more than that, because we're seeing the tiers, but I'm just using round numbers. If we had 300 businesses, then we would do a lottery system for it, and, you know, there'd be 100 businesses left out, basically. Correct?
Yes. The way SBDC describes it is, they put everyone to the lottery, and then they, if there's 200 available, they take 200, but they keep 50 to 100 behind them, because some of the folks in the 200 will fall out because they can't do the documentation or further reasons.
So, this is the reason to do a priority upfront, is because, so, for example, let's say you had 300 applications, 150 of them met a priority, met this priority that we are laying out right here, then 150 of them would get funded, and then you'd have an additional 150 that would then go into lottery for their 50 remaining slots, but we'd at least be get, making sure the people up front. Is that how, is that correct? Okay, that's correct. Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's, when we're talking about priority funding, that's, that's essentially what we're talking about, is making sure that certain people or certain businesses, I should say, that meet a certain type of criteria would, would get first priority. So, with that in mind, Mr. Hurtman, go ahead.
Yeah. When, when do we anticipate receiving this funding?
Tomorrow.
And when are we looking, did I see that somewhere? June 8th, applications are due?
No. If we get your okay today, we estimate it'll take three to four weeks for the money to be distributed, the money will start going out in three to four weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Muldoon?
Yes. The staff, and this may be very tough, so, staff have an estimation of how many businesses fall within this priority category?
I could check my phone, because business license was pulling that for me this morning. I can do that, and when going to another question, will I do that?
Yeah, to the other question, how many business licenses do we have in the city currently?
18,000 approximately.
Approximately 18,000 active business licenses in the city Newport Beach. How many of those are, fall into category of sales tax licenses, meaning they sell to general public consumers, or...
We don't have that.
Yeah, that's okay. Now, these are...
Actually, we have 20,000, over 20,000 active business licenses.
Those range from anything. That could be someone selling a travel agent and their extra room in their home, or it could be...
A vendor that we have for a special event.
Urban company, Pacific Life, yeah, or a special event company. And so, do you have that, 20,000 is a general number. Do you have the smaller number?
I do. I asked them to break it down. If we went 10 or less, about 19,000 of those are 10 employees or less. Five or less is 18,000 of the 20, and then if you get into sole proprietor, about 6,300 of our businesses are sole proprietor.
And those, I think, a lot of those, I imagine, are people working out of their homes. Do we have any idea, though, about the priorities as it relates to how we set the tier system up? Not in size, but in function, as in retail, restaurants, that category? That's, that's even harder to...
It's really hard.
I don't imagine you would, yeah.
When staff was talking the other day, we looked at it a couple ways. At first, we were doing a list of exclusions, and that could go on for miles, you know, when you have 20,000 businesses. And then we thought, well, okay, instead of that, why don't we look at the positive and try to prioritize? And we simply came up with these because they are public-facing, this is a business that the public has to come and go from their establishment, and they're going to need to put PPE. They've been closed because of that, that public interface, and we just thought, well, perhaps the council would consider these as a higher priority.
But, and, and we don't, actually, the sales, the sales tax license number might be the most accurate indicator of that number, but we don't know what that number is as far as who is dealing with public, as you just said.
Right.
Okay. Maybe we could reach out to Dan M. and find out for the end of this item. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, Mr. Avery, and then Ms. Brenner.
Yeah. You know, what we're trying to do here, I think the most important thing is that the funds go to businesses where it really makes a difference, where it moves the needle for them. And, you know, nobody wants to see funds go to a business that, you know, for a variety of reasons, may be doing fairly well, or at least, you know, is surviving and has a pretty good outlook. So, and we're really relying on the BDC to kind of do that for us, right? Based on their experience, they're all small business people, they're going to make, some of these things are going to be not, you know, they're going to be a gray area, but...
And they can help us tune it up a bit.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's just, far, is the most important thing. It's just that it, it's going to help them. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
Tara, I had a question about, when you have a beauty salon or a nail salon, and you've got independent contractors working in there, would they be a sole proprietor, or would they qualify for this type of funding?
Well, we do have a category that's, well, employees, we say, five employees or under. That's probably where they...
So, in their case, it's just them, but they work in a beauty salon in our area, and I think they pay for their space, is how it works.
They pay rent.
But they do have to have a business, do they have to have a separate business license to do that?
I believe that beauty is excluded from independent license. I thought the salon itself, but we can ask, Monique Knapp, write about that.
Okay.
All right. Any other, I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon?
Yeah, now I'm starting to really drill down in the thought process of a business that has fewer than five employees. So, if there's two people, or one person, I mean, somebody, I mean, we, they really have to validate the need, that their business has been impacted. So, the validation process will be part of the application process. But back to Ms. Brenner's comment about nail salon, so if you have, we're, you're going to get this question, what, I have five independent contractors, or, my wife and I own the salon, and I have five independent, so what's their category?
Well, we say, the word we use is employees. So, I guess the question is, would that independent contractor be able to apply independent of the salon owner?
Right.
And how does the council feel about that?
Well, that's a very important message, if that is the direction we're going. So, that would be a one-person company, fewer than five employees. Okay, I don't object to that, I'm just wanting to seek further clarification.
We, in our initial draft of language, we did have, you know, independent contractors, at-home businesses excluded, but then, the more we looked at this, we thought, well, that there is a loophole, now that you see it, you know, commercial district, you know, a number of employees, you know, they have to show a negative consequence because of COVID-19. But you're right, there could be some still that qualify when we, even with all those parameters in place.
Now, for example, you have the history, you could help me understand the business license. Like, before we got, I got on the council, there was a change to our business license tax system that accounted for real estate brokers. They all work together, but they're all independent business people. And so, our business license tax was to combine that into one entity, so there's only one license, or would do they all, real estate brokers have, I think they all have their own business license, business license, so they all pay that individually. So, a realtor or broker could say, well, my business has been impacted due to the economy.
He could.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess, I don't have a point of view on that, I'm just, we're going to get...
Yes.
This agency is going to get a lot of different types of business descriptions, business entity descriptions.
Unless the council would like us to put some exclusions in.
Like, I see every business, every real estate broker, which there are many in our community, applying for a $5,000 grant.
Well, so they wouldn't be receiving priority, because they've been open the whole time. And then, they, the other side is, you've still got to be able to justify the request for the money. And it's, I mean, I guess they could have some costs, but that's, that's a, the independence are going to be having a tough time, because, I mean, if you own a nail salon, for example, or if you work at a nail salon and you're an independent contractor, you're, I guess, I mean, you're not setting up the Plexiglas, because that's, that's going to be on, that's why you pay some, some of your money toward the owner of the building itself. So, justifying the expenses is going to be kind of tough, especially up to 5,000. so justifying the expenses is going to be kind of tough, especially up to 5,000.
But that's the trigger, right?
Yeah, the trigger's going to be, yeah, it's going to be needing to actually justify the expenses, that's going to be tough for a lot of the independent, small, small one-person shops. All right, so in light of the discussion we just had, is there any more discussion about the funding priority? Because I do agree, by the way, that absolutely front of the line needs to be the people that have been shut down by the, by the state's orders in particular. So this hits it.
Yeah, it's almost just compensation for, yeah, taking away of a right.
Or at least it certainly, yeah, helping. All right, so I'm going to take a straw poll on the staff recommendation, then, all in favor of the staff recommendation, please raise your hand.
That was unanimous.
Okay, all right, give me just a moment. All right, so then, what we're going to do is, I need to take a formal vote then. And of course, before we do that, we go out to public comment, was that about, was, okay. But is there any more discussion before we go out to public comment?
We get those numbers by chance? No? Okay, that's okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll go out to public comment on this item. First, we'll start in the community room.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. This is clearly an important program, it's being discussed today at a thinly attended meeting, I'm the only person in the community room. It was announced on a Saturday, it's being held on a Monday. I don't know how many of the business owners and employees who might be impacted by this are even aware of the meeting today. So I think it's important that you not make final direction today, but tell staff that you want them to bring back the final program for public review and approval. As to the early question at the beginning of how we got here, the Treasury guidance document, which was supposed to be Exhibit A of the agreement, had a long list what the CARES Act money can be used for, of which grants to small businesses was just a minor item. You mentioned that the county was holding $26 million for reimbursement of the city's own expenses. I am guessing when you said that, it's 26 million for all 32 cities in Orange County, so Newport Beach would at most be eligible, like, for a million or less of that. Regarding the administration of the program, which we've heard that this company is very competent, but I really do not understand how they're going to implement your suggestions for priorities, or how their lottery would work. Both of those things would seem to require that you set some deadline, which we heard a possible date, but I don't know what that, I didn't see anything in the staff report about that. For a priority or lottery system to work, it would seem to me, you have to set a date where you get all applications in for it to be fair, and then allocate the money among all the applications. If so, I don't know what the date is, my impression is the program is not supposed to have a definite end date to it. I think the nail salon issue that was brought up shows a structural problem that needs further thought. If you had five independent contractors each getting their $5,000, you're giving that small business 25,000, which was not the intent. And I think to justify their application, they don't have to be installing Plexiglas, unlike for cities, I believe the small businesses can be compensated for loss of income due to interruption of the business. And then finally, the restriction to having the place of business in a commercial or industrial area, I am concerned and wondering how that impacts the short-term lodging business, which is the only one that the city council actually on its own forced to shut down without direction to do so, either from the county or the state. Does this mean that Bur White could put in an application or Donna Abrams because they have offices in a commercial area, and the other short-term lodging operators could not? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any calling? No, all right, we'll bring it back up. Oh, there's one, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Mayor O'Neill, this is Steve Rosansky with the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and thank you for the speed with the city and the city staff, I know they worked over the weekend. To bring this matter to a vote and to move this program forward, certainly there's a lot of need in the community, and this will go at least partway towards satisfying that need. I would like to address a few of the points that you made, and a few, maybe one or two things that weren't discussed. As far as, one of my suggestions, as far as who should receive the funds in priority, and I appreciate the fact that you've singled out certain businesses to receive funds before others, I would still propose that maybe the first 25% or so be set aside for what I call micro businesses, the first tranche of applicant, or people who are eligible for the grant, the one-to-five employee businesses, these are the ones that certainly need the most, probably have the least ability to borrow or access other types of programs, such as the PPP loans and the idle loans, and I would still, you know, make a plea for allocating a certain portion of the money towards those businesses, to the extent that it's not used, it could, it could be further repurposed for the larger businesses, but I would make that recommendation. As far as actually the lottery system, little unusual, I actually proposed, I think in our conversations at the ad hoc committee, that maybe if RADA is involved, that any, anyone who applies for the grant is eligible in the timeframe, would be eligible to receive funding, and if the program was oversubscribed, then each applicant would get money on a pro-rata basis, I think that might be a fairer way to do that. But if you don't do it that way, I would suggest, and it was alluded to in the staff report, although there wasn't much discussion about it, as far as prioritizing businesses that had received no government funding, no PPP loan or an idle loan, and then after that, I would set that idle loan recipients be approved next, because those are actually loans, those are not grants from, from the state, whereas PPP loan, or, I'm sorry, from the federal government, whereas PPP loans are grants, and so I put them in a third category after the idle recipients, and then leave business that both PPP and idle loans as the fourth level of, I guess, what you call lottery recipients. And so at least it creates some fairness for businesses that haven't been able to access funding in the past, or if they have, you know, but they've had to take a loan as opposed to a grant, and technically the PPP is not yet a grant, but the way it's headed in Congress, all those loans will be forgiven. And then, with regard to nonprofits, I appreciate Councilwoman Brenner going to bat for us, and I heard Councilmember Muldoon, the comment that there are other people that, or other agencies or whatever that are providing funding for nonprofits. I will say as the head of a nonprofit, that is probably not an accurate statement, very little money out there right now for, especially smaller nonprofits. You know, we were shut out ourselves out of the PPP program because we're a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit organization, and it only allowed 501(c)(3) to apply for PPP money, and there's many other organizations that are in the same boat as we are. And then, probably one of the most important things that you didn't really discuss, and I know my time is up, if I could have another minute here.
No, please, Steve, we love hearing your criticism, thank you.
Go ahead, Steve, go ahead.
It wasn't a criticism, it was just giving you my...
It's okay, 30 seconds, go ahead, Steve.
So you really want to discuss what costs are reversible, or the program goes, it's just that, you know, that costs will be reimbursed, or the grant will go towards costs. I think there should be a discussion as to what costs are permissible and what aren't. I suggested a few in my letter, I'm sure there's others that maybe other people could come up with or decide on, but, you know, is payroll, is that a cost? Is, you know, loss of revenue, that technically wouldn't be a cost, but some people might consider it that way. So I think a more robust discussion of what costs are eligible, and also a requirement, and maybe it's going to be part of the application process, but that the applicant provide a budget as to what they intend to use the funds for, so that when you do go out and inspect their premises, if that's required, you'll know what to look for, what they spent the money on, or what they should have spent the money on, not, you know, other things that they might not have been eligible. Those are my comments, and thank you for your, for your time.
Sounds good, thank you. Any others? All right, we'll bring it back up.
Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, just real quickly on the question that Councilmember Muldoon had, I don't have, we don't have it by employee, that requires a little bit more data, but just to give you some ideas, in the restaurant and hotel category, there's about 500 businesses, and then general consumer goods retailers, about 2,500. And again, these are of different sizes, so it'd be less with the smaller numbers, but that's just to give you a little bit of a field of the 20,000 in business licenses.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I remember this, seeing this data for business license tax a couple of years ago, but we do have a way to segregate the data by the number of businesses who pay X amount, so however, most of the businesses pay less than $200 a year in a business license tax because that gives us a good gauge of how large or small they are. Do you have that data?
I don't, we were a little limited in the amount of work we had to do through the weekend, but we can certainly pull that type of data together, and I think we will, yeah.
I thought maybe that was a standard piece of information, but anyway, I think the large majority of business license taxes are paid by small businesses, I mean, in the thousands, okay.
Yep, I think that's right, too. Let me, Steve's comment made a point that I needed to come back around to, which is on the funding priority side. So, here's, here's how I understand it, but I need to, maybe, I want to expand on it just a little bit before I make an overall motion. So on the funding priority side of things, here's, I would suggest that we basically have four different funding level, or priority levels. The first would be the groups, the businesses that we described that have not received federal funding, the groups that we described that we, that received, a, yeah, I'm sorry, PPP. Well, actually, here's the question, so if a group, if a group needs to pay back the loan on the idle, it seems like we should put them ahead of the groups that just received a grant on PPP. So basically, I think there's, there's four categories, there's those who didn't receive any federal money, those who received the idle, which is the loan, those who received the PPP, and then basically every other business. So that's how I would set up the priorities, which I realize we didn't actually talk about in that, in that granular detail, so, any discussion on that?
Let me just understand what you said, so if they've received a loan and PPP, they are still eligible?
Yeah, so everybody's, so the point that we were making above in the Newport Beach terms and conditions was that if you receive federal funding, you can still be eligible for this, but you should be lower on the priority list.
Okay.
So my point, though, is we should still be focused in on the businesses that have been shut down because of state orders.
Or didn't receive any other fund, source of funding.
And so where I'm going with this is, if we stay focused on the businesses that have been shut down, then what you do is you, which is, which is basically the priorities that, the staff recommendation on this. So if you take that staff recommendation and say, the first, the first priority is the staff recommendation and did not receive any federal funding, number one. Second, staff recommendation and people, and businesses that received a loan, the idle, economic injury disaster loan. Third would be staff recommendation and received PPP. Fourth priority is literally any other business in our, in our community that meets the eligibility requirements.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, all right, then what I'll do is, let's just take a straw poll on that before we move forward, so all in favor of what I just described, raise your hand. You have a question? Go ahead.
I'm just thinking of the small business person who could not apply for a grant, could not apply for a federal loan, they don't have the wherewithal to do it, they didn't have lawyers and consultants to help them fill out the paperwork, and they're at the bottom of the list.
No, they're priority.
Oh, no, 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 they're, they're, they're number one in the priority.
Oh, all right, just, okay.
Oh, no, they're number one.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, no, no, they are the, the staff recommendation priority that we've already placed.
All right.
Did not receive any federal funding, they're number one in line.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's do that one more time, so in favor of that, that clarification?
That was unanimous.
All right, so here's what I'm going to do then, I'm going to, I need to make a motion now, so, just because I took all those, the straw polls, I'm just going to make the motion, so, with the straw poll information and direction, I'm sorry, before I do this, based on all the straw polls that we've taken, if I make a motion right now to approve staff recommendation, do you have enough information to move forward? Yes, okay. So I'm going to move staff recommendation with the direction given via the number of straw polls that we just had. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Muldoon, any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote, I'm going to do this by voice to make sure I've got Ms. Brenner, so, please let me know how you vote, Mr. Hurdman?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Muldoon?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Aye.
It's okay, aye, aye, aye. Mr. Avery?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So let me just finish again by saying thank you very much for working over this weekend to make this happen, it's a really big deal for our businesses, and I appreciate that very much. And then tomorrow morning, actually, Ms. Dixon will be going over to the county and getting a, getting our check, so we should be getting this going pretty quickly, so, anyway, just wanted to say...
If I don't come back...
Yeah, you'll come back, you'll be back, all right, so I appreciate that, anyway, we stand adjourned, thank you.